Somerset Township Board of Supervisors meeting September 11, 2024. Called a order.
First of all, I'm going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag's over here to my right, your left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all. Roll call. Mr. Boxton here. Mr. Cole here. Mr. Lawrence out. Okay, we're going to start off with the public comment on agenda items only. You have two minutes, Mr. Pollak?
Okay, thank you, Joe. Good evening. My name is Bill Pollak. I would like to comment on the minutes from the last meeting. We have made specific issues on having this specific item that was brought up and the name of the person, as well as the correspondence where we sent correspondence in and asked that both planting and zoning be involved in all meetings involving sewer and water, and that we have all correspondence from past meetings. I've requested a copy of the minutes for the last meeting, and I was told we can't see those before they vote on them. The procedure, and I spoke with Paul Myers, who's head of our audit committee, the normal procedure for this is to let the residents see the minutes. And I want to make sure that they are in the minutes because it's required by the Sunshine Act that when residents bring up a question, the question and the resident that brought it up is to be included in the minutes, as is any correspondence that's sent regarding concerns of the citizens. And it's been over two months since I sent the correspondence in regarding the sewer and water meetings and having planting and zoning involved. So I want to make sure that these are in the minutes or they will be in the minutes in the future, and that we will also get a copy of the minutes, which we believe is also required by the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'll make a motion on the minutes of August 14, 2024.
I'll second the minutes of August 14, 2024.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Have we received the minutes now? Number two, approval of check warrants transfers as listed in any other necessary transfers. I need to make a motion. I'll make the motion.
I second it to approve all check warrants and transfers as listed.
All in favor? I.
Yes.
Number three, new business. 2023 state aid funds received to distribute to employees pension plan. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Item B, we're going to table it. The update security system. Since now that there's high-speed internet, there's a couple of other options that we could go through. We're going to table item B. Item C, installation of the security walls from Andrade's Cabinry for $11,570. I need to make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it based on the same thing, the high-speed internet. We have some other options.
I'll second. And I need to, I'm sorry, I need to make the motion on item B, the updated security systems.
I'll make a motion to table it.
And I'll second it. Number four, the reports. Supervisors, Mark's not here. Mark is with the paving crew. Tresco is paving Chippewa. I was there until 2:00, then Mark came and took over. Job's really looking good. They're doing a fantastic job. They're blending all the driveways in. Everything's tied in nice. When I left, we was near the cart path on Chippewa Golf Course. The boys been crack sealing some of the roads that we're going to choose to crack the tar and chip next year. We did do three tar and chip jobs this week. Hickory Road, Wagler, and part of Carlton from McRaven to the Bentleyville ramp. Secretary?
Secretary's report. Then we'll find 1,401,233.
You speak louder.
Local share account, 149,025 dollars. Ice Expo, 205,233. Herman, Lutheran Cemetery, 1,005. Um, we can call those to account. In addition, um...
I don't know the policies and everything, but he parted here and he couldn't hear.
It's the secretary's report, he didn't have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I got some other supervisors. Another thing, if they ran Verizon tubes, you want to call them around your house or by your house, you should be getting notification from Verizon. You can hook into the high-speed internet. You should be getting something in the mail. I guess I'll toot my own horn on this one. This has been going on for over a year. I met with the county commissioners with the CARES Act money, and that's one of the things that Somerset Township requested to get high-speed internet for our residents. We have no idea when and where they're going. That's their call. We don't have much to say as to what roads they're going on. Basically, they just showed up and started doing it. And whatever roads they've got, that's what they're doing. So if you're not on it now, maybe they'll get to it. They have some of that CARES Act money available. So if you do have it in front of your house, you should begin notification from Verizon, and they'll come out and stall it for you. If you want to, I mean, there's a charge.
Do they have previous right-of-way?
Previous right-of-way? I'm not sure. They've been staying pretty much within our right-of-way.
So they're, they don't need to apply for some kind of township permit to go on your right-of-ways?
I'll put it in our right-of-way. There's still some more public comment on the agenda items. I'm sorry, I skipped over you. Greg Spreddick? These are on agenda items?
Yeah. Yep. This is in reference to the Sunshine Act, which I got off of openrecords.pA.gov. Oh, by the way, I'm Greg Spreddick, 90 Chippewa Road. And the question, questions on there that you could ask on that website in reference to the Sunshine Act is one. One question, can the public ask questions during a comment period? Can they reply? Yes, although members of the agency are not required to be asked and answered, it's good practice to do so whenever possible. Answering questions can demonstrate a commitment to helping constituents. And in many cases, answering questions informally at a public meeting can reduce requests under the right-to-know law, which saves time, which saves time and money for both the agency and the comment or requested. That's openrecords.pA.gov. So I don't see what, any reason why that this dialogue shouldn't take place in an open meeting like this where everybody knows everybody. And if it doesn't, then it looks like there's not a lot of transparency. The second comment I have is, is already tabled about the security wall, but I'm going to ask these questions anyway. What exactly is a security wall? And I'd like to have that described. What's it going to look like? And whose idea was this and why? Why do we need a security wall? Are there large amounts of cash in the office that require more security than a bank? I don't think so. What's next? Full-time security guards to protect? Those who secure employees for some unknown reason want to put more barriers between them and the tax-paying public who they are supposed to serve. Does that mean I'm done, or is the cake coming out of the oven?
No. Your two minutes are up, Greg. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Greg.
I thought it hit jeopardy.
Mike Warnott?
Mike Warnott, Almond Road. Yeah, on the agenda items, the security wall echo same thing Greg did, was it put out for bids? And the security system, like I said, I also would like to know along with the other people in the township, why the reason for this. So I have to comment on the general thing.
Yeah, I'll address the one. Our security cameras really need updated. They're, half of them don't work. And we were going to, with that security system that we're going to obtain, we'd have two other additional monitors in here, and it would be a door with a speaker also that would let you in through the lock. Right now, our cameras are not working.
What cameras do we have though?
Uh, survey the outside of the building.
No, there's three, four, two.
Four.
You're recording. How long do the recordings, how long do the recordings kept? Their motion actually?
Forty-five days kept.
Okay, forty-five days kept, and it's motion actually?
It's on all the time.
Okay, so it's recorded 7:24?
Yes.
So there's four cameras?
Yes.
And they're all on the outside of the building?
Yes.
And so the new proposal, would it cameras outside building as well?
We don't know that. We don't know that yet. Outside, because we're tabled it, we're going to go.
You had a quote?
The quote was for four outside, one right here at the door, two monitors, and a keyed door, a magnetic key door with an intercooler.
Just get one quote?
No, there's several. Three, actually.
This was a little bit?
Yes. I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, the picture that I've seen was a, on top of this countertop here from Andrade's, the same people that made it, it was glass with wood trim around it and a full-size door over there instead of a hatch. It will sit right on top of that cabinet.
That also put out for bid?
I, I don't know that. I only seen the one proposal. It was under the threshold.
Well, I'll ask my question again. Whose idea was this, and why is it necessary?
I can't answer you that, Greg.
Why is it necessary? I mean, it seems frivolous and unnecessary. Waste of tax very much. Nobody here has ever been pressed. How money do you care?
Banks don't even have that.
Do not walk in the other municipal buildings most of the time without being buzzed in.
This is not other municipal buildings?
And you can say it's never going to happen here. Nothing's going to happen in Somerset Township, but it could.
Well, that's a hypothetical. Anything could happen. When you might have surveillance operating using airplanes, that could go right.
I'm not going to get there.
We're going to have the air guns that's off there.
Okay, Paul Myers?
I don't want to wait till they, um, not even.
Okay, now, public comment on non-agenda items. Greg Spreddick?
Uh, this comment is in reference, and it asks, does anyone on the payroll and workforce have a pesticide license through the PA Department of Agriculture? Japanese or giant knotweed is a noxious species. It's spreading throughout the township, mostly along streams. Mowing, burning is only a temporary solution. Solution, what's required is an herbicide which will translocate you to, through the plant and destroy it through the root system. Another is also marestail, another noxious weed, and it is spreading widely. I've been told that the crew, for some, is allowed to spray Roundup where they need it. But having a pesticide license from 30 years in my business, and every three years we'd have to go to credits in, in certain places like Convention Center in Monroeville. And every municipality that was there, from Upper St. Clair to Waynesburg, had their township supervisor there, or Department of Public Works, getting the updated credits. And what I saw today, if Roundup was sprayed on Chippewa Road instead of bladed off with a skid steer, there wouldn't have been a guy picking weeds out of the sides of the road with his hands. I mean, a month or two ago when that was bladed, if, if that was, it would Roundup, you wouldn't even have to get out of the vehicle. You'd just put the arm out there on the sprayer, and you're done. And it just seemed unnecessary, because I watched the guys, and there's some weed you couldn't get out. And if you know anything about marestail, it's really invasive, and you could spray it. I could spray it at my place. The plant will note it's dying. It'll set a rise of them up three feet and send, "My cake's done again." And it'll, and it'll, and it'll come up again. The plant knows it's dying, and it tries to regenerate itself. So I think it would be behoove, and it'd be a feather in somebody's cap to have a pesticide.
Nobody here is sort of...
It might be a good idea, you know. That's something you'd carry, I mean, even if they didn't work here in the future, they carry that license with them as long as they keep it up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Hano?
Hi, I'm Kathy Hano, 5265 Road. I just want to talk to you about Spud Road. First of all, thrilled just to put in a new bridge. But do you know when it's going to happen?
Maybe in May.
Okay, so that's a lie that I heard before that it's going to happen in fall.
Well, we just met, we just met with someone. If, if our engineer gets everything turned in on time, it might happen in the fall, but it looks like it's going to happen probably in May.
Did you have to put that out for bid?
It's not out for bid yet. All the proposals aren't put together yet due to the engineering.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with bid for Somerset Township. We see the Washington County Council. They'll put it out for bid. It's run through them.
Are they going to pay for the whole thing?
About, I think, 50%. Fifty-one percent.
Okay.
And any overruns, they will pay.
What do you mean by overruns?
If they run into the cost of material, whatever goes up, they will pay. Washington County Conservations will pay.
Okay. Who's going to do the paving? You're going to get, you're, you have to do extra paving on that road. Who's going to do that? Is that a separate bid? The paving part?
If we, if we even pave that part, and it could be, it could be gravel, we don't have to pave it. They're going to do the ridge. They're going to do the entrance and exit. Approach, we're not, that's, they're, that's what they're going to do.
But you think maybe May? I hope so. Okay. Explain something to me. The reason that you took over Spud Road was because it was getting too bad, and the people that lived on it could not take care of it. How does that work? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Uh, we were approached by residents on...
Emery?
Emery Road, Emery Road, those residents, about taking over the, and the supervisors met, solicitor and our engineer, and we're going to take it over. And with Flood Drive, the residents came to our meeting, public meeting, their distress and concerns to take the road over. Their taxpayers, this is me talking, not the other supervisors, their taxpayers. The reason why, if we can do it, not to take the road over.
Okay.
And to be honest, people on Emery Road probably don't use any other road in Somerset Township. They get on 519 and go to Washington, go on 70. I mean, unless they're going somewhere on other township roads, realistically, Mrs. Yates is here. How many other roads you go on in Somerset Township? If you, but not, you're not driving through the township to get... They're, they're taxpayers, and we agreed to do it, and I think they're extremely happy. We did it. The residents on Spud Drive were happy, and it was a safety issue too, with the particle.
Yeah, well, I know that the kids can't even get a school bus, get on the school bus without coming across. That bridge is just scary. That's why I said, I'm real glad to see you doing it. And if you're going to do it in May, can you give everybody enough time so that they can rework their schedules? That's the only way in and out, right?
Well, they're going to put a bridge right beside that one. They're going to probably leave that one there. That'll be access to. It'll be access.
Are you going to build an actual bridge, or you just going to get one of those units that everybody seems to be using now for smaller crossings?
It's an actual bridge. It's an actual bridge. It's, the county, it's going to be like the 150-year flood bridge, everything.
I mean, the specs that they have on it are very, and it's a high-quality stream,
so they have to do the stream bed with certain rocks. They're just not putting rock back in. It has to be certain size of rock, and certain size rock closer to the entrance and exit of it, and the water cannot change. The flow has to stay the same.
Will we call for, will the bridge on New Sand Road?
No. Well, 14 won. Yeah, 14 won.
What is the cost for the bridge?
Two seven. I don't quote us. I'm not...
Total cost or our share?
No, our share is 160, I think.
So her share is 160,000?
160 to 170.
That's 50%.
We'd have to check on it to get exact numbers.
Uh, I have a question too. Um, since, uh, that's my garage goes through private property, and the township is taking over the road, how does that affect the land? Is there any comp, compensation for that? Because that's a relief.
It was a right-of-way. We already took it out. We already took it out.
Yeah, but the right-of-way is not being taken, Thomas?
It is, no. It is. Our road.
Would be, would be this taken, Thomas? The property owner?
It was a right-of-way, and we took it over.
Yeah, but what he's trying to say is...
It went through the court system.
Next to the other bridge, that area is already there.
Yes, and the property owner that's there is letting us do that temporarily, so we move it.
Okay. Whenever you get the bids, are you going to get them, or is redevelopment?
Redevelopment, or Washington County Conservations.
Okay.
They will handle it.
Okay. All right. Thanks for answering the question.
They have some contractors that they use and...
Okay.
And there was a little hiccup in it. It's not as quick as possible because Jordan, who was with the county, left, and they just hired a new person, so that takes three or four months to switch over, maybe longer. Dan Smith?
I'm Dan Smith. I live on 48th Road. I have a few questions. At the July meeting, I asked why employees are allowed overtime and was told it was for road issues after hours. Then why does the secretary and zoning planning coordinators together have over 100 hours of overtime this year as of July 5th, especially when your office hours are 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday? Our budget this year is 1,249,250, which is about the same as 2023. In 2023, the township paid $818,000 on payroll and the overwhelming amount of perks. You're spending 70% of our taxpayers' money on yourselves. Okay. What is so difficult about filling out a timesheet and doing it properly? Anywhere I've ever worked, if you don't fill your timesheet out correctly, you don't get paid. For example, on 2/8/2024, Jim almost died eight hours. What happened there?
That was where he limped. A tree fell on the bucket truck, and he's kind of a jokester, and that's what...
And then 2/19/24, he got things for eight hours. And 2/20/24, he put down whatever for eight hours. So for $30 an hour, you should at least be able to fill out your timesheet that shows what you've done for the township, for the residents of this township who pays your wages. Thank you.
Roger Rainey?
I would like to make a couple of comments with regard to the 2024 Somerset Township budget. As Dan just said, the Somerset Township budget is 1.149 million this year. The budget was not made public or reviewed at least 20 days before the end of 2023 as required by PA Code. We had to make multiple right-to-know requests to obtain this budget and did not receive it until well after it was approved in 2024. How much have you spent year-to-date this year?
I haven't. I can't answer that right now.
So you have a budget, and you can't tell us how much you've spent this year against that budget?
Honest with you, I can't. I don't have all the information in front of me.
Can you, can you imagine if you worked in the public sector and your boss said to you, "How are you doing against budget this year?", and you didn't have an answer? How long would you be employed there? So consistent with past years, in 2023, the budget was 1.3 million, and the total expenditures were 2.4 million. Unbelievable, huh? These guys have the spending money down at 77% over budget. And you can see, they can't even tell you how much they spent to date this year.
Isn't that the treasury's job?
But these guys run the township. They're responsible. She works for them, and they work for us, theoretically. The last administration, which left in 2019, their total expenditures were 1.3 million. This administration has doubled that in three years.
They've also done a lot of infrastructure repairs too, in this township.
No population growth, nothing changed.
Just wanna fix number one.
Uh, Paul Myers?
Paul Myers, two-oh-five Thomas Road. I'm here tonight for comments, not to get on any one person, just the comments in general. I've been involved with this township since the early eighties. Things when I first come in, uh, we would have two or three people in the front just beat us to death. And what happens when that happens, and, and you'll see it with these fellows, you'll see it with all the boards, once you start hammering them, they actually ignore you. I've seen it happen. My suggestion is, is to call these fellows, set up an appointment, come in and talk with them. You know, I, I think it would get a lot more done, you know? In the past, you've seen me come into the meetings and, and get on them pretty well. But I've kinda looked at it and said, "I'm not sure that's altogether right." And then we have the where, um, there's half-truths being put out. I think before anything goes out to the public, whether it be from the supervisors or it's from the general public, that we ought to make sure that it's the truth. You know, we have a lot of items that, um, past administration have done that we all don't really agree with. You know, I guarantee you, there's things that this administration does, I don't a hundred percent agree. I think everyone sitting in here is the same way. There'll be things that we all won't agree on. They have the job of trying to, uh, pass our laws and regulations for what the majority of this township wants. Now, I've heard in recently that the last administration passed some regulations, did some zoning changes, that now they don't like it and they're asking us to turn our heads and ignore it. You know, things like this just needs to stop. You know, we need to work together as a township, every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six-thirty-three?
Joe, I'm sorry, I have a couple comments on the general issues that weren't on the agenda.
Did you sign up?
Yes. I signed up on the...
You did not, you did not sign the paper for non-agenda items?
Well...
You did not sign it, Bill. Adjourn the meeting at six-thirty-three.
Joe, this is the, Joe, this is the problem, I mean, we have legitimate questions, you're only giving two minutes. I deserve two minutes. You had one sheet...
All right, take two minutes, take two minutes, or both sheets were out there.
I said...
I made a statement, I'd like to remember all the people lost their lives on nine eleven.
Yes, thank you, so do I, thank you. Mike, thank you.
Mike, at the end of this meeting, we'll have a number to talk about.
Okay, I have, uh, my name's Bill Pollak, Pollak Road, uh, I have a couple questions. One is, the agenda did not clearly state the problems, it still does not have a question on the, uh, water and sewers that I sent in in writing, that is not in the minutes, that does not reflect all the questions I had, we have them on tape, we will correct those. If we have to file through the Sunsign Act, we don't wanna do that, we just wanna have our concerns, have an intelligent discussion. The next question is regarding the bond on the treasurer. When the new administration took over in two thousand twenty, we hired a new treasurer, you required a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar SERTY bond on the treasurer. We have no record of that, that has to be given to the auditors and it has to be submitted for the Liquid Fuels grants every year. We've requested this on right-to-know, we have not been able to get this. On February of two thousand twenty-four, we brought the subject up, you voted to do a hundred-thousand-dollar bond, and subsequently with the paperwork we've seen, uh, it looks like the bonding company took a hundred-thousand-dollar deposit. We need a clarification on that, exactly what did we, why did we go from a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond, which was in place with the prior administration, Dave Blackburn's administration had seven-fifty, you approved seven-fifty, we have no record, we've asked for the records for the seven-fifty, then there's a hundred thousand was done, four years later with no records, we need those records, and we also need verification that we have not made a deposit. Have we made a hundred-thousand-dollar deposit to get the SERTY bond? We need an answer to that question. The, uh, there is a deposit report that indicates we may have, we'd like clarification on that. Uh, the second item, uh, that I wanted to bring up is discussions, uh, we have, uh, have an item on the ballot to add two additional supervisors. Our goal, and we actually have a written pledge, that we're asking any candidates that the Transparency Group supports, that we will have no more than two working supervisors. Non-working supervisors get eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a year, and as Roger pointed out, our current budget situation is out of control, we're spending almost twice as much as we spent in two thousand nineteen. It's our goal to get representation where the supervisors actually work for the majority of the people, and we have budgets that are reviewed with the residents, which is all required in the Pennsylvania codes. Twenty days before the end of the year, that budget's reviewed, everyone gets input before that's voted on. We need to get back to that, and having an intelligent dialogue and being able to ask questions, we're simply working to the code. And this, all these requirements are in the code, so those are my two comments and I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? I didn't want to, I had to sign up on it.
Two minutes.
First Mary Stafford, it's three ninety-nine Rainey Road. Uh, I'm on the Finance Committee of a condo that we own in Florida, um, and we just went over budgets for the year, and everything in our condo association is all available on the website, all of the spreadsheets, the budgets are there. Every single month, we go over the budgets, they're available to everybody, I suggest that we do something like that. But in addition, I compared, um, employee benefits in two thousand nineteen were around sixty-nine-hundred dollars per person. Now, in twenty-twenty-three, I don't have twenty-twenty-four's budget, because I got a one-page budget, budget from you guys that makes no sense, it doesn't have all the details, which I requested in June. Employee benefits right, last year were thirty-nine-thousand dollars per employee. If I look at my, um, condo association in Florida, they're averaging thirteen-thousand dollars per employee, this is a big association, it's a four-million-dollar budget, we have thirty-two employees and they get full healthcare. So, are we getting ripped off? Have you guys shopped around for healthcare? It just, is the number wrong in the budget? I'm just confused.
All addresses.
Okay.
Mr. Blackburn and Mr. Bear were here and myself. Last year, Dave Blackburn's administration, he went to other townships, the, uh, employees of Somerset Township did not have them. When I started here, I did not have them.
Because in two thousand, in two thousand nineteen, you were getting something, sixty-nine-hundred dollars of benefits.
We're getting eye-deep.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Blackburn went around to other townships and approached other townships, and I can say it's the same company, state-run insurance, he went out. Mr. Cole and Mr. Rohr had nothing to do with the, the benefits. I'm not sure the month, but it was either August or September, might've been October of that year, we approved the benefits, that package for employees.
Okay, it just sounds like it's a, a...
Another Nottingham Township has that I know, Horster Bayne has the same benefits. Something, not the same...
Benefits.
...benefits, but you can change different things, it's the exact same as the other township, the Lord's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So this, sorry, so this administration, besides myself, Mr. Rohr, Mr. Cole had nothing to do with employee benefits. With Mr. Bear, Mr. Blackburn and myself approved benefits back from employees.
But then it was going, should we shop this because thirty-three thousand dollars per employee benefits seems crazy, we're rarely paying thirteen thousand per employee.
That's because there was no medical.
They have medical.
They have medical.
Back then they had none.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm comparing today, today.
It was noted that we were giving seven dollars an hour in the salary under the prior administration to cover healthcare, so that was part of the issue, so you need to get through all the details of this, but there was compensation for healthcare, they didn't have any healthcare and then they brought it in and it was ran this again, but I believe it was in June of two thousand twenty-two, Stephanie, that's when a hundred percent payment on healthcare was approved right at then board for everybody. And that's when the number went from thirty or forty thousand to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand for eight people. But I, I think the point is, we should shop this because, yeah, we're paying thirteen-thousand per employee in episode four, full benefits versus thirty-three thousand here. There's twenty thousand dollars per employee, heck, absolutely, I'm president of condo association also, and I've run major...
Okay.
The benefits are out.
We need to move, we need to move on, okay? Mr.?
Andy Burton.
Andy Burton, I'm sorry.
Hickory Road, question. Reason I'm here is Hickory Road, the bridge. I heard you're putting a bridge on Spud, which is all fine with me, but you know, everybody knows, every time it rains, my garage gets flooded, the road gets flooded. Reason for that is what supervisors did, they pushed the black pipe into the big galvanized pipe.
It creates a vacuum.
Creates a vacuum, the walls you had on the left side, the right side of the intake coming from my property are out of there, backing up. You've seen it in April, my garage got flooded, and there's a lot of space, it went over the road. And there is twenty times more traffic on Hickory Road than there is on Spud. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, adjourned. Uh, if we can stand real quick for a moment of silence for September eleventh, two thousand one. Thanks, bye, have a good night.